The September 9th, 2025 School Board Regular Meeting is called to order. Ms. Treskey, please call the roll.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to do a republic where we can stand one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will move on to the School Board Recognitions. This evening, we are excited to announce some great news. This academic year, we are welcoming two new student representatives to the School Board. I would like Ms. Liz Quintana and Ms. Deidre Trigg to introduce us to our new School Board Student Representatives. Ms. Trigg, will you introduce one of our new student representatives?
Sure. I have the delight pleasure to introduce to you Stephen White. He is a senior at William Fleming High School, and I am happy to present Stephen with his official student representative badge.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Trigg. Ms. Quintana, will you introduce another one of our student representatives?
Hi, everybody. I have the pleasure to introducing John Lopez Ortiz, a senior from Paddock Henry High School. I am excited to present John with his official Student Representative Board Badge.
We are thrilled to have both Stephen and John on the board and look forward to their active participation in representing the voices of their fellow students. All right. We will continue on with our School Board Recognitions to the 2024-2025 Leaders of the Year. This evening, for our second group of recognitions, we have Mr. Dominic McKee, Chief Human Resource Officer. Mr. McKee, will you please come forward and tell us about these recognitions?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Ms. Apeel, Vice Chair, Mr. Cherry, Student Representatives, Board Members, Dr. White, and everybody in attendance. Before I start, I just want to go over the process of this. So I'm going to say a little bit about them, and then when I pull them up, I'll continue saying things about them, and then we'll show a short video, and then they'll get to say a few things, a few comments. The Leader of the Year award are to celebrate excellence in leadership across Roanoke City Public Schools. This recognition highlights leaders who exemplify RCPs values and promote student success, whether they are serving as principals or program directors, assistant principals or site supervisors, or central office leaders. These awards are about reinforcing the positive, collaborative, and high-performing culture that makes our division special, and they directly align with our strategic plan goals around talent retention and employee success. So without further ado, the first member of the 2024-2025 Assistant Principal of the Year, Dr. Tracy Hoffman from Roanoke Academy in Math and Science, come on up. Okay, if you just pause. Okay.
Pause. I will remember to pause.
I'm telling myself to pause. Tell myself to pause. With over 25 years of educational experience, Dr. Hoffman is known for being a dynamic leader with a deep commitment to equity, engagement, and student-centered learning. And above all, she is known for her consistent joy and willingness to make learning fun. She often encourages her students and staff, "It does not matter how smart you are, it is how you are smart that matters." At Roanoke Academy for Math and Science, she fosters a school culture rooted in differentiation instruction, authentic literacy, and strong community partnerships. The judges were struck by her visibility, compassion, and dedication to student and staff well-being. While she has decades of experience, she embraces continual learning and exemplifies Dr. White's call to "Remember your why." And with that being said, we will show a short video.
Good morning. This is Tracy Hoffman coming to you from Roanoke Academy. It is a terrific Tuesday, a beautiful morning for learning, and we are so excited you're here with us. So I started out in radio when I got out of college and did the morning show for two different radio stations, Q99 and K92, and in between those, I taught a class at a middle school. But then radio came back and said, "Hey, come on back. We want you back on radio." And when I went back, I missed all of those personalities that you get to meet and engage with during the day, the people and the children, and that drew me back to education very quickly. All right, have a good day. Kiss your brains. And so I stayed in education when I took over for a teacher who was in early retirement and just loved it, loved it from that point forward. Started getting my master's degree in educational leadership and then just kept moving forward with teaching different grade levels, both in the secondary and then as an administrator, started out in secondary, and then came to elementary, and I love it.
Good morning, Mr. Harbor. Have a great day.
This is their safe place. This is where they feel like they can make a difference in their own lives. They build that confidence in working with the families and making sure that the families know just how much we truly care about the safety of their children, the academics their kids are receiving, and how confident their kids feel when they walk into our building.
Oh, my goodness, we're starting today. Awesome. Thank you for wearing your badge.
It's truly exciting, and it's always great to see and be honored and have someone see how hard you work. But I think that for me, I enjoy it and I love it, and I love being able to support the teachers and lead them in a positive direction and help support our families and our students. And I'm just really excited to have this honor, and I'm really proud of myself and I'm really proud of our community and our school.
Oh, thank you. Wow, that was really put together so well, and it just, it shows the fun that we get to have every morning as we do those, we take those temperature checks with our children and make sure that they are feeling good about coming to school. And if something's off, we touch base with them. We go back, we circle back to them. Just a quick story so that you understand where I'm coming from and where this passion comes from. I'm going to take you back to 1987. I was in the fifth grade, Ford Stewart, Georgia, and I was working on a History Day Competition project. I had an individual project on Rosa Parks. Six of my friends had a project on Martin Luther King Jr. We did so much research. I had a phone conversation with Rosa Parks during her coffee break. It was an amazing experience, and that was all thanks to our fantastic sixth-grade English teacher, Ms. Libby. Could not thank her more. Ms. Libby took us to Atlanta, Georgia, and we celebrated Martin Luther King's birthday. We got to meet Coretta Scott King, and as we're standing there, Mrs. King is right behind me, and I can feel that power. I could smell that perfume. It was monumental for a fifth grader. And Ms. Libby bent down, and she saw that I was standing in the picture with all of those who were doing the presentation on Martin Luther King Jr., and she said, "Tracy, get out of the picture. This isn't your presentation." This hand comes down on my shoulder. I laughed because I didn't know what to do. My ears were red, I could feel them ringing, but this hand comes down on my shoulder, and it was Coretta Scott King. And Mrs. King said, "This child will be in this picture." Amen. That is what we are here doing every single day. That is our why. That is our why. We are the hand. Thank you for this honor. I appreciate it so much, and I love Roanoke City and our children.
So next, the 2024-2025 Principal of the Year, Dr. Kristin English from Westside Elementary School. A visionary leader with over 20 years in education, Dr. Kristin English has transformed the school culture at Westside Elementary School, where she herself attended elementary school and later began her career as an educator through her equity-driven leadership, commitment to instructional excellence, and deep investment in family and community partnerships. Under her leadership, Westside has seen double-digit growth for student achievement in English Language Arts and Math, achievement gaps have narrowed, and staff collaboration has flourished. She frequently collaborates with other schools and principals, including shared professional development, exemplifying the mantra of "When we know better, we do better." One of her nominators wrote, "Her families trust her because she stands tall, meets each challenge of a day with quiet grit and determination. She simply puts her head down and works hard, but at the same time, she keeps her head up and is proud of her school." So with that being said, we'll show a short video.
My mother was an educator. I come from a long line of educators. I knew as a child, I loved children as a kid, and I knew this was something that I always wanted to do was to work with children.
Well, that's a hexagon, and it's yellow.
I actually went to Westside for part of my elementary school experience, and I graduated from William Fleming High School and Roanoke City Public Schools. After graduating from Radford University, I came back and started my teaching career here at Roanoke City Public Schools at Westside. I taught here for a number of years before moving out of state, where I began my administrative experience as an elementary school principal. And then a few years ago, I had the opportunity to come back home where it all started and begin my principalship here at Westside Elementary School. It's really special to know that I once walked the halls as a student and then in later years as a teacher, and then I'm able to have the opportunity to be here as the instructional leader. Running a school is like running a large classroom. It's important to build those relationships with your staff, with the students, with the community, because together we achieve great things for our kids. What's an hour from 7:30? Yes. And so the biggest takeaway that I have is that I'm just able in this position to impact students, but then also the educators that are in front of the students. I really truly feel that it's such an honor, not just to lead this learning community, but to be named the Principal of the Year and to know that my peers recognize and see that and chose to nominate me for such an honor. I feel like I carry them with me in this award and honor, and we all are successful. We are always better together, and it truly does take a village to raise our young people, and it's important that we are connected with our community in order to raise our young people and to ensure their success in the future, St. John.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Apeel, School Board Members, Superintendent White, and esteemed stakeholders. I am deeply honored and humbled to be recognized as the Principal of the Year. This award is not just a personal achievement. It reflects a shared vision and wavering support and strong partnerships that exist throughout Roanoke City Public Schools. To the School Board and Superintendent White, thank you for your steadfast leadership, trust, and investment in our schools. Your commitment to excellence in education provides the foundation that allows principals like me to lead with purpose, innovation, and heart. To our community partners and stakeholders, your engagement, generosity, and belief in our mission empower us to create meaningful opportunities for every student, or as I say, every eagle every day. Together, we are shaping not only learners but future leaders. This recognition belongs to all of you as much as it does to me. I am truly grateful to serve in a district where collaboration, equity, and student success remain at the forefront of everything we do. Thank you so much.
Congratulations, Dr. English. I would love to say that myself.
Every eagle every day. Every eagle.
He always surprises me.
And next up, the 2024-2025 Doris Ennis, Central Office Leader of the Year, Mr. Carl McDaniel, Director of Federal Programs. Mr. McDaniel has devoted his entire year, entire career, 35 years, to supporting and administering federal funding with RCPs. With the levels of experience, it is an understatement to say that he understands the complexities of administering federal resources in alignment with RCPs priorities. He plays a vital role in ensuring our schools receive federal funding and utilize it in a way that maximizes student success. He currently manages budgets that exceed $10 million, coordinates with schools in relation to their allocations, juggles the various state and federal laws and reporting requirements, and has led multiple federal audits with no major findings. During the influx of pandemic-related funding, he successfully collaborated with division departments and leaders to carefully and intentionally spend nearly $100 million within the required timeframe, making a generational impact. Most noneducators and even those within the education system do not fully understand the impact of federal programs and the level of detailed collaboration required to implement these programs and funding with fidelity.
Yeah, I learned.
So next, the 2024-2025 Principal of the Year, Dr. Kristin English from Westside Elementary A visionary leader with over 20 years in education, Dr. Kristin English has transformed the school culture at Westside Elementary School, where she herself attended elementary school and later began her career as an educator through her equity-driven leadership, commitment to instructional excellence, and deep investment in family and community partnerships. Under her leadership, Westside has seen double-digit growth for student achievement in English Language Arts and math. Achievement gaps have narrowed, and staff collaboration has flourished. She frequently collaborates with other schools and principals, including shared professional development exemplifying the mantra of when we know better, we do better. One of her nominators wrote, "Her families trust her because she stands tall, meets each challenge of a day with quiet grit and determination. She simply puts her head down and works hard, but at the same time, she keeps her head up and is proud of her school." So with that being said, we'll show a short video.
My mother was an educator. I come from a long line of educators. I knew as a child, I loved children as a kid, and I knew this was something that I always wanted to do was to work with children.
Well, that's a hexagon, and it's yellow.
I actually went to Westside for part of my elementary school experience, and I graduated from William Fleming High School and Roanoke City Public Schools. After graduating from Radford University, I came back and started my teaching career here at Roanoke City Public Schools at Westside. I taught here for a number of years before moving out of state, where I began my administrative experience as an elementary school principal. And then a few years ago, I had the opportunity to come back home where it all started and begin my principalship here at Westside Elementary School. It's really special to know that I once walked the halls as a student, and then in later years as a teacher, and then am able to have the opportunity to be here as the instructional leader. Running a school is like running a large classroom. It's important to build those relationships with your staff, with the students, with the community, because together we achieve great things for our kids.
What's an hour from 7:30?
8:30.
Yes.
And so the biggest takeaway that I have is that I'm just able in this position to impact students, but then also the educators that are in front of the students. I really truly feel that it's such an honor, not just to lead this learning community, but to be named the Principal of the Year, and to know that my peers recognize and see that and chose to nominate me for such an honor. I feel like I carry them with me in this award and honor, and we all are successful. We are always better together, and it truly does take a village to raise our young people. And it's important that we are connected with our community in order to raise our young people and to ensure their success in the future, St. Com.
Good evening, Madam Chair, APo, School Board members, Superintendent White, and esteemed stakeholders. I am deeply honored and humbled to be recognized as the Principal of the Year. This award is not just a personal achievement. It reflects a shared vision and wavering support and strong partnerships that exist throughout Roanoke City Public Schools. To the School Board and Superintendent White, thank you for your steadfast leadership, trust, and investment in our schools. Your commitment to excellence in education provides the foundation that allows principals like me to lead with purpose, innovation, and heart. To our community partners and stakeholders, your engagement, generosity, and belief in our mission empower us to create meaningful opportunities for every student, or as I say, every eagle every day. Together, we are shaping not only learners but future leaders. This recognition belongs to all of you as much as it does to me. I am truly grateful to serve in a district where collaboration, equity, and student success remain at the forefront of everything we do. Thank you so much.
I would myself.
Every eagle every day.
He always surprises me.
And next up, the 2024-2025 Doris Ennis, Central Office Leader of the Year, Mr. Carl McDaniel, Director of Federal Programs. Mr. McDaniel has devoted his entire year, entire career, 35 years, to supporting and administering federal funding with RCPS. With the levels of experience, it is an understatement to say that he understands the complexities of administering federal resources in alignment with RCPS priorities. He plays a vital role in ensuring our schools receive federal funding and utilize it in a way that maximizes student success. He currently manages budgets that exceed $10 million, coordinates with schools in relation to their allocations, juggles the various state and federal laws and reporting requirements, and has led multiple federal audits with no major findings. During the influx of pandemic-related funding, he successfully collaborated with division departments and leaders to carefully and intentionally spend nearly $100 million within the required timeframe, making a generational impact. Most noneducators and even those within the education system do not fully understand the impact of federal programs and the level of detailed collaboration required to implement these programs and funding with fidelity and success. Mr. McDaniel may work behind the scenes, but it is one of the most critical roles to an urban school division that receives a large amount of federal funding. During the span of his career, he has worked to transform federal programs into what he calls "engines of opportunity." By streamlining and strengthening internal processes, RCPS has increased the percentage of funds that directly reach schools and classrooms. In a time where federal education funding is being scrutinized, Mr. McDaniel shows that RCPS responsibly and efficiently administers its federal funding program, directly benefiting our students and making a life-changing difference. And with that being said, we'll show a video.
So I started working in Roanoke City in April of 1990. So I've been here, this is in my 36th year. The first 10 years, I kind of assisted the director of Title I, and then she retired in 2000, and then that's when I kind of took over. So I became Director of Federal Programs in 2021. It's kind of right during the pandemic where we received a lot of ESER funding. As a division between the basic ESER funding we received plus all the supplemental ESER funding that we were able to apply for, we received approximately $100 million. So we had a lot of initiatives going on, in many cases in areas that I've never worked in before. I never thought I'd be dealing with capital projects, but I think the things that we're able to do with those ESER funds has made such an impact on Roanoke City Public Schools. I think being in my 36th year, the thing that makes me still want to come into work and still feel good about what I'm doing is the great staff that I have. You know, they're so reliable and so good at what they do, and I hope some of that is the effect that I've had on them. I feel like me communicating with my staff has allowed them to understand what federal programs is all about and what it is that we need to get done. They're willing to take on responsibilities, and so that really makes my job a whole lot easier. So winning the first Central Office Leadership Award that was named after Doris Ennis was quite an honor. You know, Doris Ennis has been a staple for Roanoke City Schools for so many years. I'm just happy that I was able to work with her during part of her career. You know, she's a special person, and the fact that I get to be the first recipient of the award that was named after her and that it's a leadership award, and she truly is what leadership's all about, and so it was quite an honor.
Thank you. Wow, that was, that was great. Claire told me they do a great job with that video. But the two principals are great. They're going to be hard to follow. I'm a man of few words. I just want to say thank you to those who nominated me. It's quite an honor to be nominated by your peers and coworkers for an award like this. As I said in the video, I have a great staff, and they're so dependable and so reliable. It just makes it so easy to come in and work every day, so I'm very appreciative of them. And again, to be the recipient of an award named after Doris Ennis, who's just been such a leader and done so much for Roanoke City Schools, it's just such an honor, so thank you very much.
Only 36 more years to go.
We're so lucky.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Amazing.
Well, congratulations to all of those who were recognized. And the RCPS Leadership Conference where these were originally presented was such a great way to really start off this school year, and we really do have so many amazing people here at RCPS. And a common theme you probably heard was the sense of the importance of community and the team from every one of those leaders there, so congratulations to all of them. Moving on to more good news and recognitions. Yes. For the next recognition, we have Dr. Haley Poland, the Assistant Superintendent of Student Success and Support Services. She's here to introduce our next recognition. Will you please come forward and tell us?
Good evening. Roanoke City Public Schools was one of nine winners of the inaugural Career Z Challenge, which is a national multi-phase prize competition designed to expand high school students' access to work-based learning experience. Along with eight other winners, Roanoke City Public Schools demonstrated exceptional innovation and capacity to deliver high-quality, student-centered work-based learning. Through Jess and Kathy's work, over the past two years, we have gone from a group of 80 applicants and 73 semifinalists representing 34 states, including six from Virginia, to during the 23-24 school year, semifinalists participated in a community of practice and received technical assistance through workshops, working groups, and topical discussions. Based on those results, 10 finalists advanced to Phase 3 of the challenge during the 24-25 school year. Roanoke City Public Schools met all submission and participation requirements, and we will receive a portion of the $1.5 million prize pool to further enhance and scale our work-based learning strategies. Roanoke City Public Schools was the only winner in the state, in this only school division in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and we are one of nine national winners. Much of the planning and execution of this goes to Jess Truax, the Coordinator of Work-Based Learning for Roanoke City Public Schools, and Kathy Duncan, the Director of Career and Technical Education. Their leadership ensured that CTE and Career and Technical Education course offerings and work-based learning strategies both reflect our student need and employer demand. Jess and Kathy?
Oh, yeah.
It's been a privilege to do this for the last couple of years. I think it has actually helped our work-based, it has helped our work-based learning program. We were only about a year and a half old when we were entering this program, and it was great to hear and learn from other people across the nation what they've been doing. Many were more seasoned than us, and so we were glad to be part of it and to be able to implement many of those things here in Roanoke City. Thank you.
You know, most of the folks that won this challenge were post-secondary schools.
All right.
Regular school, public school divisions that won, so I wanted to take my hat off to Jess for all his hard work.
Well deserved.
This is for you. This is for you.
Thank you.
Yes.
No, I know.
Thank you for everything.
Congratulations, sir.
Congratulations, sir.
I won't kiss you, promise.
Thank you so much.
Your title, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, congratulations to our whole CTE team, and I wore my new CTE squad shirt. Yes, tonight in honor of our CTE.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was gonna say, I was gonna ask for one.
Yes.
So, and we really are one of the best in the nation, and apparently we podium for high schools, so. All right. Yes. Moving on to, for our final recognition for the evening, we'd like to recognize the Governor's Proclamation that the week of September 15 through 19, 2025, so next week, is Adult Education and Family Literacy Week. You can read the entirety of the proclamation in our agenda item as posted in board docs, and this is just a great reminder of the good work that RCPS is already doing, as we just cut the ribbon on the Community Empowerment Center on August 29. And we even, I believe, may have some of our CEC partners here tonight, representing Roanoke Valley Allegheny Region 5 Adult Ed. So thank you to all of our community partners who help us empower our students and families and the community through education. All right. Okay. Moving on to the personnel list, is there a motion and a second to approve the personnel list as presented?
Moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Dr. Jamison, seconded by Mr. Cherry. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Hearing none, all those in favor say aye, those opposed say no.
Aye.
All right. And the personnel list is approved. The motion carries. Onto the consent agenda, is there a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Cherry.
Seconded.
Seconded by Dr. Jamison. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye, those opposed say no.
Aye.
And the motion carries, and the consent agenda is approved. Mrs. Watkins, please tell us about the gifts that have been received by RCPS.
Thank you, Mrs. APo. The board accepts with gratitude the following donations and all donations we received. This is, this is very special, as is all of our community partnerships, but just, just listen. The William Fleming Alumni Association provided a gift of $1,700 to the William Fleming High School Athletics Program. Mr. William Peters provided a donation of $1,000 to Preston Park Elementary School, and Alcoa Mortgage provided a gift of $10,000 to the Community Empowerment Center, in addition to the donation of personal hygiene products. Community partners, I, I am proud of us. I am so proud of this community, and it, for as long as I'm on this board and able to shout you all out with the gifts and the partnerships that you guys provide, I will do that with the most gratitude on behalf of our board. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Watkins. Onto citizen participation. Mr. Cherry, do we have any signups this evening for agenda or non-agenda items?
We do not have any speakers sign up or agenda or non-agenda items.
All right. And thus, we're on to the superintendent's reports. Dr. White, please provide us with your updates.
Very good. Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the School Board, and student representatives. This evening, we're bringing forward items for your information and consideration, including our Opening of Schools Report, approval of the Annual Standards of Quality Compliance Verification Report, an update on health benefits for the 26th benefit year, and a report on procurement transactions with locally businesses and businesses owned by women and minorities. Before we get to our agenda, however, I would like to highlight a few items for the board and for the public's information. We've truly had a great start to our school year, thanks to all of our incredible students, teachers, staff members, and parents. So I just want to give, let's give everybody a round of applause for such a wonderful one. I've had the benefit of visiting most, nearly all of our schools. I only have a few left to get to, but I've visited nearly all of our schools so far, and I have seen effective first instruction already underway and taking place, starting on the very first day of school. I want to again thank our teachers and our principals, our school leaders, and all of our staff, everybody. It takes everybody to make a successful start to the school year, so I just want to say thank you for making our students feel welcome and making them, and making sure that they are engaged from day one. And I want to thank our central office team as well. They've been out and about in schools each and every day to offer support in any way that they can, and so we don't take that for granted, and I want everyone to know that we see their hard work as well. It has been a true "we are one" spirit to start this school year, and we carry that throughout the year, so I'm really, really proud of everyone. And last Friday, as Mrs. APo said, we proudly cut the ribbon on our new Community Empowerment Center in Brooklyn, Washington. Our entire community came together to celebrate, and after we cut the ribbon, our visitors were able to tour the building and meet with community partners and even receive services. So let's take a quick look at that. We are here to celebrate the grand opening of our Community Empowerment Center, and we couldn't be any prouder today.
This is a historic day for our city and our schools. Not only does today officially mark the completion of our Equity and Action Plan, which has increased accessibility to school services across the division over the past four years, but it also represents the next act in this historic building's life.
This center is a one-stop hub of support, from helping families get started with school enrollment to offering workshops that strengthen connections and engagement with their students' education. Because we know that when families succeed, what happens? Students succeed. Since its opening, it has already supported more than 300 families in navigating RCPS registration, accessing resources, and connecting with the support they need. This is more than a building. This is legacy work. It means doing work that's not necessarily just for us, but it is for the generations of children who will be served. Again, we have so many community partners coming together because they understand the value of having a hub, a community hub of support. It is a very comforting task to know when people are trying to understand how to access resources, we can just tell them, go to the Community Empowerment Center. They will guide you through the different steps with community partners that we know and we work with and we can refer people to.
I and all African families are very thankful for the Community Empowerment Center support. They enrolled my kids in kindergarten and gave us school supply.
The day I came to enroll my child, I felt content to be able to get my child in Roanoke Academy School and everything needed in order to get my child enrolled in school.
With me, promises made. Promises kept. I know that's right. Again, thank you to everyone for coming together. It really has been just amazing to see everybody coming together, community partners, our staff, every department, to again make sure that we can serve our communities for generations to come, and so very, very proud of that work. Switching on to the, to next week, I would like to remind our families of our juniors and seniors, we have two seniors here today, that we will be hosting this year's annual Regional College Fair next week on Tuesday, September 16, from 6 to 8 p.m. at Patrick Henry High School. So this is a collaborative partnership with Roanoke County Public Schools and Salem City Schools to provide our students with the opportunity to meet with college as well as with career and technical education representatives. So we hope to see you there, so mark your calendars. Come on out to the College and Career Fair next Tuesday at PH. So, to begin our report this evening, I will ask our Chief Human Resources Officer, Dominic McKee, as well as our Chief Operations Officer, Chris Perkins, Chief Instructional Administrative Officer, R. Chief Freeman, and Chief of Academics and Accountability Officer, Dr. Cindy Williams, to come forward for our Opening of Schools Report. So we're going to start with Mr. Perkins. Over to you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. I want to start with a public apology first. I owe Ms. Eller, my third-grade teacher, an apology because I thought it was corporal punishment when she hit me in the back of the head and yelled Christopher for every day for, in my third grade. Now I know she was just kissing my brain. All the time, I thought I was just being bad. All right, enough of that, so I want to, I'm going to bring up six points to let you know how the opening of schools had went. The first point, over the first The first point, over the first 12 days, we are at 90.04% on time for our buses in Roanoke City.
Nice.
That's, that's phenomenal when we were in the 70% range for the last several years. So that's fantastic. That means that we have 12 buses that are still a little late. We're working through those, we'll have those on time. Mr. Dowdy works miracles and he'll figure it out, and we'll have them on time. No pressure on Mr. Dowdy. Second, from a facility maintenance point, we did have a little bit of an issue at Breckenridge. We had a leak from a drain that had leaked down into our old band room on the lower level of Breckenridge. Good thing is, we had just built a whole new addition for the band room. But we worked with the administrators at Breckenridge. The students should be back in there this week, we'll get that fixed. Preston Park is still six weeks behind from a capital improvement perspective as we open schools. From a safety and security perspective, we had a couple of things that we shared with our families across the district and with our community, working with the, our Roanoke Police Department. We had some concerns about an online gaming national trend, and while Roblox, we have talked about, I just want to make sure that everybody understands that online gaming, and if we're not monitoring as parents, can create some problems for us. And those problems were related to violent extortion and gore networks, where people were luring children into other chat rooms from, using the online gaming platforms to do this. And it was enough of a concern for our local police department and us here at Roanoke City Public Schools that we wanted to make sure we shared that with the, our entire family and student system. The second safety concern that we want to share is swatting. We've talked about this for a couple of years. And if you remember, two years ago, we had a series of swatting events that we went through. Our neighbors in, in the county in Salem have dealt with swatting beginning this, at the beginning of this year. We also have shared that, because we do not want to be a victim of that, but it is possible. But we want to let everybody know that we are prepared. We are working with our, our staffs and our students and making sure that if something does happen, we will be prepared and we'll respond appropriately. The fifth thing that I want to bring up is food service, and we haven't had any issues with food service. In fact, our SFE, when we switched over, has been fantastic. But our food providers have notified us that we have some delivery issues that have not affected us, but they brought in drivers from out of state. We need CDL drivers. Now, we've been through this with CDL drivers, so our CTE people, if they're, they left. CDL and CTE may help us keep our food deliveries on time.
I agree.
Dr. Paulin.
I agree.
And then last, I'm going to end on a good note. September 22nd, Roanoke City Public Schools will have full-time, self-supervised nurses in all of our schools. Big shout out to HR, we know they've been short-staffed, but they got contracts out today to all of those nurses. Big shout out to Jill Jeter. I've got to, I've got to tell her, she, she wanted to be director, she got it. And now she's in my office every day saying, oh my goodness. So big, but shout out to her because she's done a great job with it. So that will end my presentation. Remember, no news is good news. We had a couple of issues there, you heard, but we're, we're having one of the best openings that I, since I've been part of Roanoke City Public Schools that I can remember, so. Yep. Kiss my brain. Ms. Eller used to hit me in the back of the head and yell Christopher when she did it, so.
Good evening again, and Mr. Perkins took some of my thunder about the nurses, the contracts going out today. So thank you, Mr. Perkins, whoever you.
Want to hit him in the back of the head?
No, no, I'm good. Don't want no reports against me.
Kiss his brain.
We did open the school with three classroom vacancies, so we had, still had like a 98, 99% fill rate there. All of our administrators are filled and everything like that. We're still working on our classified in terms of IAs and whatnot, so we still have a ways to go with that. But I think we had a pretty good opening of the school, so just want to let you guys know that. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
So Freeman, you see how quick I was, Dr. Williams?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, school members, and Dr. White. We just, I want to share with you the great, more about the great opening that we had. Last month, we talked about all of the frontloading we did to implement our new curriculum. And it's paid off because we're in the classrooms, we're getting lots of great feedback. And I just want to say kudos to our teachers, our administrators, and all of our division personnel that kind of frontloaded that to get ready, because we're seeing it as we're going through our learning walks. So great feedback with the ELA curriculum, also with the math. What we did with math, we tried to, as we implemented curriculum, we tried to pull back some of the digital programming because we wanted our children to make sure that we were collaborating, we're talking about our learning and working on math. And so we've noticed that as we're in our classrooms, students aren't behind the Chromebooks, they're actually talking and working, so that's wonderful. Also, just to share, we still have our instructional toolkit that has our Hampton City units, but also we pair with our Roanoke City resources, so we want to make sure that our teachers have those. So those are up and running. We have updated pacing guides, and we're still using the same assessments called Mastery Connect, it's a platform. So it's really important that we have our tools in place for teachers and we see them in action. So kudos to our division staff for making those accessible and our teachers for doing such a great job. And then lastly, I wanted to share that we like working together and collaborating across the state. So we work together within our division, but we're also part of two consortiums. One is called CIP, and there are 72 school divisions, so we work with those. We actually started our PLCs this week. So for instance, our elementary principals get to get online with all the elementary principals across the state in 72 other school divisions. Same for middle, high school, central office. So it's huge because we want to build those relationships and learn from each other and share. So we're in that consortium and also in the Hampton City. That's 20 other school divisions that's out near the coast. So we like to build the relationships because we share our successes and also learn from others too. So great things going on, I just encourage you to come out because the sunshine is in our classrooms.
So I'm going to be very brief too. I won't be Dominique's time tonight, though. Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Superintendent Dr. White, and members of the board, student representatives. It's already stated, yep, we're, we're running, and this is our first four, five-day week. Full speed, things are happening, great things are happening. As Dr. White stated earlier, we've already started visiting our schools. We started that, of course, in the first few weeks of schools, but on yesterday, we actually started with our learning walks already. You'll hear more about that in the weeks to come when we do our student achievement update, on what we're doing a little bit just to enhance our student learning walks during those times. And instructional learning walks are taking place in our buildings with our instructional leadership teams, and we're discussing the data as we're walking through right afterwards, followed up with the instructional leadership team meeting. So it's a little bit, things are done differently, as you heard today, one of our stellar principals, Dr. English, she started yesterday with our learning walks. And on yesterday, the schools that took place with learning walks was Fallon, Preston Park, Hurt Park, and Lucy Addison between yesterday and today. We have some that are scheduled for tomorrow, and I had the opportunity to share with Hurt Park and Lucy Addison today, and there is effective tier-one instruction taking place in the classroom. So we're building on what we gave this past summer in our professional development. Teachers are moving forward with the instruction. Principals are there, making sure the accountability, they're out, visible in the classroom, they're monitoring what they're expecting. And when you walk in, if you're looking for a principal or one like you, you're not going to find them in their offices. So it is paying off. In some of those instructional team meetings, we go back to backwards design, where we're looking at, what is our problem of practice? What do we need to go in the classroom looking for as high-yield instructional strategies? What do we need to do to adopt, adapt our lesson plans and our CSSPs? So instruction is taking place in the classroom, and I just want to make mention of a few additional things. As we know, we had to make sure we started our Operation Nest. We are almost, and we'll find out tomorrow in a few updates, that we might be at capacity in some of our classrooms. So it is paying off, so we're grateful for that, especially with our students with special needs. So we thank you all for moving forward with some changes that were needed. Again, with discipline, I don't want to say much because we're off to a good school year start. And I feel like that if I say it, this ain't wood, the weather's not for something, because we may, I don't want to jinx us. We're off to a great school year start. Just a couple of reminders, we do have our football game, our rivalry game next Friday.
Yes.
And that is Fleming versus PH at PH at 5:00 p.m. So we look forward to seeing you there if you can be there, and next year's going to be a short summer.
Very good. Thank you to all of our chiefs and to our staff as well for making this opening of schools a successful one. So just thank you again to everyone. So next, I'll ask our Executive Director of Accountability and Strategic Initiatives, Dr. Jonathan Schultz, to come forward. He will provide a summary of the measures from the Annual Standards of Quality Compliance Report for your consideration. So Dr. Schultz.
So everybody has, has seen it, has uploaded it into Board Docs, it's the same process that we followed all the years previously. Andrew Hartman, who's our Director of System Data and Reporting, helped organize the process to check with everybody across the division, all of the chiefs organizing all of the reporting to make sure that we're hitting, being able to check all the boxes for the Standards of Quality Report. So does anyone have any questions related to this year's report?
Any questions or comments from the board? I did want to note that it, that that report includes, you know, our ratios of various specialized staff, and I know, I think it was, is EL staffing in, in that too? Or I know, we, basically, we had, we knew we needed to go way up in our EL staffing numbers, and as far as I know, we've met that. So like, big props to go from, you know, our 50 to the 85 or however many we need to do. So that was a big, a big lift in a very short amount of time, so good job to the whole division and on the report. So anything else? All right, thank you, Dr. Schultz.
For the work you do, sir.
Yes.
Yes, thank you so much.
And I do want to give the board a chance, if anybody wanted to make any comments about opening of schools. So I do, so do either of our student representatives have anything you'd like to contribute about how schools have opened this year?
Yes.
Go ahead.
A terrific job has been done in the opening of schools, and I would like to thank everyone that had a part in that, so thank you.
Go ahead.
What do you want me to say?
You can say you don't have anything to say, too.
Yes.
Yes, you can say that.
I do not have anything to say at the moment.
And Ms. Kintana, any comments about opening of schools?
I mean, I have a junior that has not given me any complaints, that's a win.
Wonderful, Mr. Link.
I have a seven-year-old that started writing and singing songs about her teacher as soon as she found out who it was. High marks all around.
Wonderful. Dr. Jamison?
I would just, I have just a few things, I don't have any children.
In schools.
In schools. I have my, yeah. And no, what I took note of, for those of us who have been around a minute, I, it occurred to me, I'd like to remind us all that a quiet start to schools has not been a common thing. This is, we need to offer the highest of praise. It, it used to be, you know, we all have a month, we respond to emails, and it used to be nobody wanted August or September because you were going to be really busy. And so I, I just wanted to take a minute, I mean, as I was taking notes of this, the fact that we are starting new initiatives, and we're starting them so quickly with learning walks, et cetera, the fact that we are continuing, sorry, new initiatives with curriculum, and we're continuing new initiatives from last year right off the bat. So we're no longer engaged of flavor of the month learning approaches. We are nearly at full employment, we are at over 90% on time, and that we have a major construction project that is only six weeks behind is remarkable. And, and a special shout out to Mr. Dowdy, who makes the routes sing. I mean, we have, you know, because it's gonna, it, I don't know that I can remember ever, and this is two years in a row, that we have had a quiet and successful start. And there couldn't be a better trend, sometimes we don't say enough about the things that we don't see. And we have not seen so many problems that get in the way of our students' learning. So congratulations, you deserve every minute of accolade on this, it's remarkable.
Yes. Ms. Trigg?
I would like to say definitely congratulations on an awesome start. I believe it started with convocation. I have a lot of educator friends that were very charged up from convocation. I think it poured into the classrooms, we're welcoming the students. The students have been happy, I know a lot of kids as well. My son in particular has actually been ready to go back to school on Monday and just excited and saying he missed school. And I'm thinking, who's this kid in this other room? I'm listening to him, he'll talk to his friends at that, he's not telling me. He's having a whole conversation with a group chat, saying, I can't wait to get back to school. So I think that is amazing. I've had two of his teachers actually reach out, saying how great he's doing. Just across the board, one of my friends told me this has been the best start in 15 years that she's been an educator. And just hearing different educators that are enjoying the no-cell phone policy, they are able to teach and give instruction and not worry about discipline in a classroom. One of the things I would like to say, encourage parents that are listening, continue to encourage your child to follow instructions and put the phone away. If they are telling their teachers they don't have phones and they have them on them, they're not being honest. Let's follow directions and make sure we are assisting our educators and continuing to have perfect instruction in these classrooms.
Thank you, Ms. Trigg. Ms. Watkins?
Just a couple of things, just to add. I am so excited and proud of, again, the work that we do with our community partners. The fact that we partner with the police department to get ahead of what could be a horrible thing for our students and, and families. I think that is really important, it needs to be recognized that we're tapped in to what's going on and what could impact our students from the outside. We take care of things in-house, right? We take care of our own house, but sometimes things come to our door, right? That we can't, we can't control. But the fact that we are working with the police department, the sheriff's department, all of our community partners is so important, and, and congratulations on that, that we have that, those relationships, and that they're great relationships, longstanding relationships. The other thing I wanted to say was, I don't have any little kids in school anymore, but the same bus that has come down my street for 25 years is picking up new ones. And these little jokers are running up on that bus. And hugging their bus driver, and the parents are running up on the bus. One of my neighbors had to go up on the bus and carry her little one off the bus because apparently she had so much fun that she fell asleep on the bus and felt comfortable enough to do such a thing as she was down in the seat asleep. And I mean, it's just, every day I see them, when I'm working from home, I see them getting on and off, and they are so excited, they're excited to tell their parents what happened as they're walking down the street for the day. And so I just, it's exciting to see. It reminds me of when my kids were younger, and it's just, it's so good to see kids enjoying school.
Thank you, Ms. Watkins. Vice Chair, Cherry?
Vice Cherry?
Well, this is really all a prime example of organizational discipline. I echo the sentiments of my colleagues, since I've been on this board every year. I, I, it's gotten better and better and better every year. This is the best that it has been from everything that we've named. And then, you know, everybody brings up the kids, I typically don't because I get super emotional when I talk about my kids. But just to hear the energy that my children have, particularly my daughter Ada, if you know, you know, just got some amazing news, and to pick up my daughters and to have the principal come to me excited about some positivity regarding my child versus, you know, the opposite, just lets me know that we're off to a strong start. I personally, this is my first, I know we're talking about schools and our, and our opening, but as a parent, this is probably the strongest start to the school year that I've had as a parent. So that is a result of the leadership that you all bring to our division, our teachers, our staff. We are doing all of this together, so definitely appreciative of the work we're doing, and let's continue to drive and push the needle forward.
Yes, and just to wrap it up, you know, Yes, and just to wrap it up, you know, first, big kudos, really, that we only had three openings, you know, in the classroom. I've taught in schools where we had more than three openings in our math department alone when school started, and that, no, no joke. So that is amazing, and, and I have heard across the board and seen how our staff is getting into the schools to make sure that our teachers and administrators have the support they need, and at the buses, and, you know, getting kids, you know, getting the buses through the lot at PH, you know, at dismissal, or sorting out how to do it at Preston Park, like, change it all from day one to day two, you know? And, and it really is a "we are one" moment, and so it's a testament to how the team is working all together to get everybody going in the same direction. So, definitely kudos, kudos to everybody in RCPS. So, great, great opening to the year.
I'm sorry, Chair. To Ms. Trigg's point, I knew it was gonna be a strong year. I was on vacation, and a plethora of teachers inboxed me, it was like, where were you at? You missed it. It's convocation. You missed it. So, I have never got so many inboxes about convocation, so I knew we was on to something. So, again, kudos.
Yes. Yeah, there's been a lot of comments from staff about all the things leading up to the school year as well. So, thank you, Dr. White.
No, thank you, and thank you to the board for your continued support, and thank you, Madam Chair, for bringing us back to the opening of schools, because I lost my mind there for a second. It just moved us on to the next thing. No, but I just, you know, I appreciate your continued support. This does not happen without your leadership, your guidance, and your support. So I just want to say thank you to our school board, and again, thank you to our staff, to our students and our parents. Again, I just think that everybody's focused, focused on the same things. We, and again, we always say we want our kids to be healthy, happy, safe, and strong, and we want them to learn something too, right? So, we're off to a good start. As Mr. Freeman said, I don't want to jinx us, but I think that we are, we're, we are focused, and so thank you for your comments, and so that, that means the world to us, to know that we have your support. Now, for the SOQ report, just coming, circling back to that, I believe that that is on your agenda for your approval.
Yes, we do need an approval there. So, is there a motion and a second to approve and provide signatures to the 2024-2025 Compliance Verification Report affirming the division's compliance with the standards of quality and other miscellaneous reporting requirements as submitted?
Moved. Second.
Moved by Ms. Watkins, seconded by Ms. Trigg. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye, those opposed say no.
Aye.
All right, and the motion carries, and the 2024-25 Compliance Verification Report is approved, and the necessary signatures will be provided. And now, moving on to-
Right, very good. And thank you, Dr. Schultz, for that as well. Thank you. All right, next I'll ask our Chief of Human Resources, Dominic McKee, as well as our Chief Financial Officer, Kathleen Jackson, to come forward to present an update on employee health benefits for the 2026 calendar year, as open enrollment will take place November 3rd through November 14th. So while they're making their way forward, I do want to take a moment to provide some important context. As you may recall, during our budget approval process in the spring, Mrs. Jackson presented an option that included raising the deductible for our HRA plan, which is one of three medical plans that we offer. Now, this was one option for helping to offset the 5.5% increase in healthcare costs anticipated during budget development. Based on the best information available and the recommendations of the school board at that time, we did not increase the deductibles, and instead budgeted for RCPS to take on the majority of that added cost. Unfortunately, we've recently learned from our insurance consultants that projected year-over-year costs will actually rise by 7.3% rather than the 5.5% increase that they projected back in the spring. Now, that difference leaves us with a shortfall of approximately $300,000 in the current budget year, in the current budget. And so we also know that costs are expected to continue increasing in 2027, which will affect our 2026, 2027 budget, since insurance is by calendar year and not by fiscal year. So this is very concerning, and I do want to emphasize that this, unfortunately, is not unique to Runox City Public Schools. It reflects a national trend in rising healthcare costs. So when Mrs. Jackson presented in May, we were confident that we could responsibly absorb the increase in this year's budget, but with this new information and what we're seeing nationally, I do want to be transparent with both the board and with our employees that changes to our HRA plan are likely. Having said that, I do want to assure you that we remain committed to protecting our employees, and we pride ourselves on providing a strong benefits and compensations, compensation package. So in order to do so, we must also make decisions that will allow for stability and sustainability for the years to come to protect our entire organization. So, Mr. McKee and Mrs. Jackson will now walk you through the details of where we stand, as well as the options available moving forward. So, Mr. McKee, I'll start with you.
Good evening, again, Madam Chair, Ms. Apel, Vice Chair, Mr. Cherry, members of the board, student representatives, Superintendent Dr. White, all those joining us in person and online. Mr. Jackson, Ms. Jackson, excuse me, and I will provide an overview of the 2026 benefits updates and cost-saving measures for consideration for Runox City Public Schools. As always, our goal is to offer a comprehensive and competitive benefits package that supports the well-being of our employees while maintaining fiscal responsibility. We believe that informed employees are empowered employees, and RCPS remains committed to ensuring that our staff understand and can access the resources available to them. So with that being said, I want to start talking about our medical options, plan options. So, RCPS participates in a preferred provider organization, also known as PPO Medical Plan, allowing employees to choose from a wide network of providers without needing referrals. This model supports flexibility in care, competitive pricing, and access to a broad range of specialists and facilities. In 2026, RCPS will continue to offer three medical plans. The first one is our High Deductible Health Plan, HDHP, with the Health Savings Account, HSA, which we have 41% of our employees that are enrolled in this plan. It's a high, it has the highest deductible. There's no premium payments by employees, plus RCPS contributes to the employee's HSA. The HSA stays with the employee and funds rollover from year to year. The next plan is our Health Reimbursement Account, which is known as HRA. We have 50% of our employees enrolled in this plan. This is a higher deductible plan. RCPS provides HRA dollars so employees can access to reduce this obligation. It's, it has affordable premiums, and the co-pays for office visits and prescriptions. And the last plan is our Traditional Plan, which we have 9% of our employees enrolled in this plan. This has the lowest deductible, low out-of-pocket maximum, high premiums, and cost pays for office visits and prescriptions. Now, the next couple of slides, it's gonna be a lot of information, so we want to try to narrow it down and just have, and use an example of a fictitious employee, but real examples, so we can show you exactly what we're talking about. So, so to begin, the fictitious employee is named Ms. Chicago Johnson, and she has a husband and two children, Boomer and Sooner.
He's not in here.
Okay. First of all, first of all, Boomer wears glasses, all this will come into play later on. Boomer's, Boomer wears glasses, and Sooner wears contacts and has braces, okay? Her maiden name was Bears. You get it? Chicago Bears? Okay, okay.
I'm with you. I'm following.
I'm trying, guys. This is like, not entertaining, but anyways. Whichever plan she needs to cover, she wants to make sure she has an employee and family is what she wants to focus on. So she's gonna bear down and focus on our HRA. You guys get it? See, you get it, right? Okay. All right, I'll go, I'll stick to my day job. So, when talking about Ms. Johnson, she wants to focus on the HRA plan. So if you look at the one in the middle, she knows right out of bat that her deductible is gonna be $4,000, and her out-of-pocket family max is gonna be $8,000. And you can go down forth and see exactly the comparison between the three plans, but she chose the HRA plan. So some of the highlights that we're gonna talk about today is, one, like Dr. White mentioned, the rates are gonna go up 7.3%. That's minimum. You know, we budget for 5.5, but it's 7.3. So looking at the difference and what employees say is, okay, now what does that mean to my bottom line? What does that mean to my pocket? How's it gonna impact my, my check and whatnot? So, for employees on our, our High Deductible Plan, they're gonna see an increase in anywhere from $6 to $14 in terms of, I'm sorry, a decrease in $6 to $14 in terms of how much we put into their HSA. For the HRA plan, the employees will see anywhere from a $10 to $24 increase in their premiums, and that's what Ms. Johnson will feel, will see on her plan. And on the Traditional Plan, our employees will see, and this is gonna be the largest impact, our employees will see anywhere from $40 to $162 in terms of their premium, premiums going up, excuse me. We also will see a 3.7% increase in our dental rates. Vision will go down by negative 2%, and we'll talk a little about the vision plans that we're gonna offer. Legislative changes, you look at our wellness, I'm sorry, yeah, the wellness benefit removed from accident and hospital indemnity plans due to new legislation. And then we're gonna also offer some new plan offerings, which are new voluntary benefit plans and the new voluntary vision plans. And the other thing about the, the new deductible, in terms of the High Deductible Health Plan, it's a mandated IRS, a mandate that we have to go up 3.3%. So last year, we went up from, it was, individuals were, we went from 31, $3,100 to $3,200, we went up $100, so we're gonna, we're gonna go up $100 again this year, from 32, from $3,300 to $3,400 for the individual plan, and then for the family plan, we're gonna go up $200 from $6,600 to $6,800. So, in the past two years, we've gone up, and that, these are IRS mandates. Now, again, looking at Ms. Johnson, she's on the HRA plan, so how will this impact her monthly? We talked about anywhere from $6 to $24. Well, it'll impact her, if you look at employee plus family and HRA, her premium's gonna go from 314 to 338. So that's where she's gonna see the increase in terms of her premiums. And then you also have the comparisons of our High Deductible, HRA, and Traditional, and we just want to make sure our employees know exactly what, how this is going to impact them. And this is, we're looking at the cost sharing. We, we talked about how that is impacted. So the cost sharing is how much does the employee have to pay versus the employer? And we did some comparisons around other school divisions, and, and Ms. Jackson's gonna talk about this a little bit, but the trend is, the, the employee pays about 15%, and the employers pay 85%. If you look at our HRA, we're at 10% to 90%. So we, we compare pretty favorably, especially when you look at other school divisions, some pay a little bit more, and some pay a little bit less. But the biggest one is our traditional. You see where they have to pay, if employee plus family, she would have to pay 44%, where we pay 55.8%. So, and like, we only have 9% on our traditional plan. This is our dental. As you see, I, I mentioned that Sooner has braces, so she wants to make sure she chooses the Delta High Plan, which is the employee plus family. And as you see, the, the rate for 2025 is at 101.88, where we're, we're recommending that in 2026, it goes up to 105.65. So, you see how the, the rates will increase.
Could you tell me the name of the kids again?
Boomer. If my kids were here, they would say Sooner.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. And then-
Oh, oh, you missed it.
You missed my joke. You can go back and look it on YouTube. And the last thing I want to talk about is our-
There was a lot of theater in here on your account.
It was. You missed over. But, okay. And the last one is our, our, our vision plan. What we, what we've done in the past, where if our employees, if they had our medical plan, they had to be enrolled in vision, but our employees came to us multiple years saying, hey, we would like just a standalone vision plan. So we heard what they wanted to say. So now, our employees can, if they don't want to get our medical, they can just get our visual, uh, vision, excuse me. And Ms. Johnson is gonna do the alternative buy-up plan, which it'll cost her about $21.68 in terms of her premium, which means Boomer can get the lenses that he needs, and Sooner can get the frames that he needs. Yeah, okay. So, with that being said, I'll, I'll turn it over to, oh, I'm sorry, I want to pause and see if we have any questions that I can answer, before I turn it over to Ms. Jackson.
The effective date would be January 1st.
January 1st, yes, ma'am. Mm-hmm.
Can you do me a favor and go back a couple of slides? If we go slowly, I'll tell you when we get there.
Okay.
The answer's no.
Right here, right here, right here.
Well, let me go back.
Go forward one.
Forward, okay.
So, it looks like the cost sharing for the employee is going down on the High Deductible Plan, but is up on the HRA and the Traditional.
Yes. Yeah, the cost sharing is gonna go down $6 to $14 for our employees.
Okay. Okay. That's what I just wanted, I wanted to make sure I was reading it right. Thank you.
And just so, to make sure that I'm clear on this slide, the biggest impact would be on those who are on the Traditional Plan.
Yes, yes.
And 50% are on the HRA?
Yes.
And what was the percent in the-
41% in the High Deductible Health Plan.
So we are talking about 10-ish?
9%?
9%.
So, 40% of RCPS staff could see their employee share go down?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Just to clarify, that on the, the HSA plan, the High Deductible Plan, the employee share of premiums is zero. So, so that'll stay zero, but when we kind of cost-share that, that increase, we contribute a little bit less into their HSA. So employees on that particular plan, not only do they not have any money that comes out of their check every month to have that plan, but we actually pay some money into their health savings account every month. So that's, that's why that's showing as a negative number. Their contribution stays at zero, but just what we are able to contribute into that savings account on their behalf goes down a little bit, if that-
Okay. That, that makes more sense. Thank you.
And we are, therefore, we're talking out of pocket. Only for HRA and Traditional impacted district. Forgive me, I didn't, I think I stepped on someone.
So on the High Deductible Plan, a little less money is going into their HRA than they are currently getting, and out-of-pocket costs on HRA and Traditional is going up. Okay, thank you.
And, and the out-of-pocket maximum, or the deductible, is also going up.
That's what we're gonna, that's what we're gonna talk about.
Potentially.
Boomer and Sooner.
Boomer and Sooner. Let's go.
And there was the High Deductible- is indexed by the IRS. Is that indexed to, like, the Consumer Price Index? What, what is that? The IRS is driving the deductible, not the deductible, um-
Annual increase.
It's the annual increase that was indexed by the IRS.
Endited by the IRS, yes, sir.
And what is that index? It said on the slide that it was indexed to something by the IRS. I'm curious if that's indexed to a Consumer Price Index, or-
That'd be too high.
Or inflation, or-
Yeah, it's not that high.
I can check on that and get back to you.
Just curious, okay. But, I mean, we have no control over it.
Correct, yes.
Yeah.
Ms. Quintana or Ms. Trigg, did you all have any questions at this time? I know Ms. Jackson still needs to present some more information. Okay.
No, I'm still trying to process, yeah, everything, so, but, thank you.
I'm sure it's tied to claims experience, too.
Oh, so not like cost of living adjustment, it's probably something insurance.
It's claims experience, it's insurance. Okay.
Okay. Well, thank you. Good evening, Chairperson Mrs. Apel, Vice Chair, Mr. Cherry, members of the school board, and Superintendent White. I am going to bring us into, as Dr. White shared at the beginning, that given costs at this point, now that we're working on our renewal coming in higher than the projection we had at the time we were doing our budget, and just looking ahead, as Dr. White said, to anticipated, additional costs going forward in future years, and budgetary squeezes on all levels anticipated, we're gonna bring to you for consideration a few ways to reduce the cost of our health insurance. So, the first, we did bring to you, as Dr. White said, in the spring, as a possibility, and we did not implement that at that time, but want to bring that back for consideration, is the potential of- is the potential of increasing the deductible on our HRA plan. Currently, it is $2,000 per individual or $4,000 per family. We do contribute $1,000 per individual or $2,000 per family in HRA dollars for the second half of that. So we do help offset that. So the max that the employee has to reach currently is $1,000 for an individual or $2,000 per family. We would propose potentially considering moving that up to $3,000 per individual or $6,000 per family. We would continue to contribute those HRA dollars. So the impact on the employee would really be $2,000 per individual or $4,000 per family. That kind of adjustment would be about a 3.4% reduction in the renewal projection, which is more than $1 million over the plan year. So half of that would impact the current year budget. Because of course, as we discussed, our health insurance follows a calendar year. So that would begin in January. The next thing for consideration is looking at those premiums. So we just, we're talking a little bit about that cost share of how much the employee covers versus how much the school division covers. So as you saw on previous slides, the biggest share for our employees is those on our traditional plan. It ranges from 22% to 44% of the premium cost. It averages about a little under 10% for those on our HRA. And then there is no premium for those on our HSA. And we are not proposing any changes to the HSA. So as we discussed, sort of a benchmark of similar public sector entities is more of a 1585 split. So we did take a look at what that would do if we moved in that direction. So if we upped the employee share to 15%, as you can see here, we'd be looking at an employee who's on an employee-only plan on the HRA would see $38 more of cost in each paycheck, going up to the maximum. Someone on an employee-plus-family plan would see an additional $73 coming out of each paycheck. That would result in a projected almost million-dollar savings, again, over the full plan year. So half would be realized in the current budget year and half in the next budget year. Feeling like $73 a paycheck might be a bit much. We wanted to look at, what would it do if we kind of split the difference? Looked at maybe not implementing quite such a large change in one year. So we looked at if we implemented instead a 12.5% employee share and sort of cut that in half. So you see here, kind of in the highlighted cells, what that would look like. For individuals on HRA employee-only, it would be $21 more per paycheck. The biggest difference there would be two employee families would be $39 more per paycheck. So not surprisingly, that kind of cuts that savings in half. We would realize about a half a million-dollar savings across the whole plan year if we implemented a change like that.
Next, may I also just jump in here as well that when we're talking about savings, I just want to just dig into this a little bit because I want everybody to understand that there are items, keep in mind that this, you know, when we talk about tight fiscal times, there's, you know, likelihood that we may be faced with additional cuts from the federal level, from the state level. And we know that we were flat-funded at the local level this past year. If we're flat-funded again, you know, that that could impact us. There's no indication yet about that. We don't, you know, we still don't know. But we, there were quite a few things charged to fund balance in this current year that we may need to pay for in the, for the next, at least, calendar year, right? Or fiscal year. So I just want us to realize that the savings doesn't mean that, you know, that would be money that would be, that we'd sit on, that would be used to pay for things that we are currently using fund balance on. Keep in mind that that's gone after this year. So I just want to give a little context to that. And Ms. Jackson, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's really a shifting of funds. So just wanted to provide that context.
Thank you. I appreciate you for making that clarification. And so absolutely, some of the consideration is the unexpected increase beyond what we thought it would be for the current budget year. But though that is more than we budgeted, 7.3% is actually pretty good from what we're hearing. It is more typical. So, you know, as we're not only looking at this current year, but what is going to build upon these dollars and what we might expect in further increases, we're trying to sort of be prepared to be able to handle whatever increases might be coming and what that would look like. So thank you very much for that clarification. So I wanted to show a little bit, since we're talking about sort of the cost share, we've thrown a lot of percentages at you, that the overall plan cost is going up 7.3%. But when we're talking about the cost shares, how much of that do we, as the employer, cover versus how much does the employee cover? So on this slide, just kind of wanted to zoom out a little bit and show what those differences are. I've just presented sort of three possibilities. So the first column is no change to our plan design. Our share stays what it is now. The employee share stays what it is now. The total premium cost for an employee-only HRA plan is going to be $13,100 for the whole year next year. So with our current plan, we cover a little over 90%. The employee covers a little over 9%. So you see there what our share would be versus the employee. Then in the middle is that sort of middle of the road. If we were to increase the portion of that, that we would ask the employee to cover, up to 12% of the total. And then the final would be if we were to ask the employee to increase to 15%. So just to kind of put a visual to what we're talking about in potentially considering adjusting the employee versus employer share on those plans. And then to kind of dig in, what does this mean for employees? I just pulled out sort of employee-only. The majority of our employees are on employee-only. And then employee-plus-family is the most costly, of course, plan. So just to give you a sense of really what kind of dollars are we talking about? So with no changes to our plan design, our employees who are currently on the HRA employee-only plan would see $5 more per paycheck coming out at each paycheck. Employee-plus-family, it would be 12 more dollars per paycheck if we changed nothing. So everything's going up at least some. That's kind of the minimum that our employees would experience. If we decided to change to the employee share being 12%, 12.5%, they would see a $25, excuse me, a $26 increase each paycheck for employee-only or $45 for employee-plus-family. And then lastly, if we went to the 15%, the employees would see a $43 per paycheck increase or an $85 for employee-plus-family. So that's just sort of to put it in perspective of really what are we talking about in terms of the impact to the employee that they will see in their paychecks. Just a couple other things. I mentioned already, we are not looking at any changes to the HSA. We would be continuing to intend to offer that as a premium-free plan for employees. And so our CPS would continue to cover the full premium cost for that plan. And then the traditional plan, the employee, as we've discussed, already covers a higher share that is such a, such a high-cost plan. There's a lot of variety. As I mentioned, it goes from about 22% employee share all the way up to 44%. So I am looking at if we could make small adjustments there, less so from a cost-savings perspective and more so from attempting to kind of move to a more, more towards uniform cost-sharing there. Because it strikes us as a little strange that we cover so much of the cost for some groups and so much less for other groups. So a small cost savings of about $34,000 if we were to make that change. Obviously, with this being such a high-cost plan, even a one percentage point change would be a lot of dollars for the employee. So obviously, we don't want to, we can't make a drastic change in one year. So I was looking at just sort of minor tweaks in that area. And then lastly, we talked about our dental plan. But one consideration that was presented by our insurance consultants as a possibility would be to have the employees absorb the increase on our dental plan. It's a small savings, about $22,000, but we're talking very small dollars. So you see here what that would look like in 25 rates versus 26 rates. So we'd be looking at anywhere from $2 more per month for the employee up to about $5.57 more per month for the employee. If we did that, that would be about a $22,000 savings in those options. And so a lot to think about.
Right. So why don't we go down the line?
Chris is itching, let Chris.
No, we can go down the line. And I don't know if our student representatives had anything you wanted to contribute about the healthcare or benefits. But we can start at that end? Okay. You want the insurance people to go first?
No, no, no.
Yes. Any comments? Yep, you can say none at this time, it's fine. Ms. Trigg.
I will say, I love your presentation. It does make me feel better looking at it versus when we first talked about it. I wanted to know if we would possibly be able to get feedback from some of our educators or all of them for the matter, or whoever can participate in it, like how it would affect them? Maybe possibly it'd be something that they would look at, especially the ones who have that traditional plan. Maybe they would consider going into the other plans that may be more feasible for them or so forth. And also, would we have, to make sure that we would have on-site people to explain the benefits to them, whether they could be at the school or if it's some kind of fair for them during like an off day, that maybe they have like teacher planning and no students at the school kind of thing, that they would have the opportunity to be able to look at that? Because it's a lot when you think about it. And I know open enrollment is coming up soon, so probably have to get a quick jump on it.
I'll just jump in here and then Mr. McKee, you can kind of follow up. But we are planning a video for employees so that to fully explain the various options. And then working with consultants to work employee by employee, correct?
Yes, we are working with our alliance to set up a program where we're trying to, in the past, we've done passive enrollment. So we're looking to see if we can do active enrollment as well. And if we do that, then we will bring individuals from another company on school grounds. But our employees will also have a chance to set up a phone meeting with them before. So they have to talk through their options and medical plans before they sign up for it. So we're looking at both of those options. But we still want to make sure that our employees are informed about with these changes and the other changes.
Thank you, especially since every, every family situation is unique and every employee situation is unique, to do it employee by employee. Now, I know that there's very little time in between before open enrollment to do that, but working with them to get the consultants to work family by family. We thought that maybe that would be a good approach.
And then one concern is, well, maybe we have some employees that might not set up an appointment. We'll make sure our staff will follow up with the ones that have not signed up for an appointment to make sure they do so, so they can be educated about their choices and medical plans.
Okay.
Ms. Watkins?
Thank you for doing all of those things, especially, you know, having that opportunity to have a one-on-one conversation with the. And I think it was really important, the research that you guys have done into how many of your employees are on which type of plans, just so that you can be thoughtful about the changes. I will say, being someone who's been in this industry for a number of years, that this is par for the course. It's not just school divisions. It is, this is, this is federal. This is nationwide. Everyone is going to feel an impact going forward in their insurance premiums, in their benefits, what's available to them, deductibles, maximum amount of pockets, all of that. We are all going to feel it. Even some of our, we like to call them essential extras or extra benefits, right? Things that are kind of like throw-in benefits for our plans, whether it's fitness or wellness benefits and things like that. All of that stuff is getting cut back. It's just getting very, very expensive to insure. A lot of things that were put in federally are being rolled back in contributions from our federal partners. They're being reduced. And so we're going to feel it, just like any other, you know, food, everything. Utilities, you name it, it's all going up. And unfortunately, this is, this is so important. Healthcare is so important. The thing that I worry about the most is our preventative care. I'd like you guys to keep an eye on that part of it. If we have preventative care kickers or benefits to entice folks to go and get their wellness checks and things like that, if you can find a way to keep those things in. Because if they can do those wellness visits upfront, it can prevent higher claims experience after. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watkins. Ms. Quintana, oh, and our other student representative?
So I, thank you, Ms. Jackson and Mr. McKee. And I think it is important to educate our CPS faculty and staff about their options regarding healthcare. It's a very important time to stay united, especially with everything that's going on at the federal level. So, thank you.
Ms. Quintana?
It's, it's just worse. I just really dislike that we're in this position now. I really dislike it. I know, you know, we try to foresee and, you know, help our employees. And I know, like Ms. Watkins mentioned, we are all going to feel it. I guess I'm just frustrated with the whole situation in general, not necessarily just here, but just in general. But thank you. Your presentation, like always, is amazing and breaking it down helps me.
Mr. Link?
I have two questions. The first, when we were looking, so the employee share is currently 9.2%, right?
Basically, it varies a little bit between employee-only or employee-plus-family, but it's within 9% to 10%, yes.
And we talked about going to 15% and then we talked about going to 12.5%. And the savings that you, and I, I think, this is without drawing a bunch of diagrams and having to catch my brain up. When you had the 15% share, for example, is the savings we would yield. That was $956,000. But we have to split that so between budgets, right?
It would cross-budget years, correct.
So if we, so we are currently trying to solve a rough ballpark, a $300,000 shortfall. And if we go to the 15% share, we're yielding $956,000 in savings or in budgetary room. I don't like calling it, you know, no one's really saving anything.
Not savings, but.
But that is a shade, that is what, 475 in this budget year?
Correct.
If we go to the 12.5%, which is trying to create some middle ground, we're only saving 488. And out of that, we only get half of that for this budget year. And so we're still not solving the problem we're trying to solve. Is that a true statement?
Yes, we wouldn't, we would have to come up with the different, there would still be a small difference that we would not expect this change to cover, correct?
Okay. And then my second question was actually for Dr. White. It sounds like the board is going to be asked to participate in this decision. When do we need to make a decision to give staff time to talk to their families and consider how they're going to respond?
Yes, thank you for that question. We, ideally, we would like to continue this conversation at the School Board Workshop.
Okay.
And however, I know that there needs to be time for you to think about it, consider it, for us to work with it as well. And again, these are kind of operational considerations for us as well. So it just depends on the board's position about whether or not this is an approval item. I know that we're still considering that. But the decision would absolutely have to be made by the first board, School Board meeting in October to give us enough time to communicate with our employees, to answer their questions. to answer their questions prior to open enrollment, which would begin November 3rd. So, that's a very short window of time between that October meeting and November open enrollment. So, I would say ideally, we would like to really kind of nail it down by the end of the month, if possible.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Link. Dr. Jamison?
I have, I think, six questions, but some are quick, but cut me off when you're tired of hearing me talk. I'm, what I'm, what I wondered about, it's good thinking about Ms. Watkins' point, about the breakdown of who's on what plan. I'm also wondering, what I, what I found myself thinking about is, what is the realistic risk to each individual population within those groups? So, very specifically, what I was thinking about, you, I heard you say that most of our people are in the individual plan, not on the individual plus family plan. I'm a little curious about, because those are, those feel like big dollar differences. So, what is the percent on individual versus what is the percent who are carrying a family? And then further, and I don't know if this is information we get to have, and maybe if we could get a bit larger picture statistics on this. What's the percent of people who actually end up at their deductible? Understanding that if you end up at your, I mean, there's a deductible because the insurance companies are playing a game of risk, that you'll not ever get there, but you're paying for that room, right? Now, understanding, of course, that if an employee gets to their deductible, they've had a pretty bad year, and we need to be conscious of that. But I'm also curious, if we're thinking about increasing deductibles, how many of our folks need all that deductible every year? Because I know from a human perspective, that, that matters to me, we can't predict everything, but there are numbers on that.
I, I do have some information on that, I don't have, I have numbers, but not percentages of how many are on employee only versus family, so I'll have to get that to you. But we did ask some questions of our insurance consultants about reaching the deductible. And they shared that over the last plan year, we've had 8% on the employee-only coverage who reached their individual deductible. Of employees with family plans, 16% of those employees reached their deductible, 4% of their, their dependents who were on their plans reached the deductible. And in terms of the out-of-pocket maximum, 3% of employee-only coverage of individuals on that coverage reached the out-of-pocket maximum. 7% of employees within a family plan, and 1% of their family members reached that out-of-pocket maximum.
So, I'm wondering with that, that's really helpful, because what I'm wondering about is with these, I'll put cost savings in air quotes, because I think your point is good. Would it be possible to, if we think about, I mean, increasing deductibles makes people squeeze, queasy, understandably so, because if you need to use it, it's because things aren't going well. But I'm wondering if it would be possible for us to consider an emergency fund policy for those who maybe need help because you're reaching your health maximums? That's, that, we have the, sometimes your employee generated, I know at Virginia Tech, we have something that you can contribute leave to, you can contribute some of certain things to. I don't even know, I don't know what the legalities around all of that are, but, you know, we're not exactly in the highest-paid professions here. And, you know, suddenly, if you're at $6,000, because you have family health emergencies, that's not nothing. And I wonder if there's some space in there, not to cover the whole difference, but could we achieve the cost savings that we need as a division? Because I think what you've convinced me of tonight is that we are looking not at an if, but when do we get to a 15%? It's not next year, in my opinion, but it's a win, because market.
W H E N, not W I N.
Yes, win, yes, not a win.
And to clarify, you mean 15% of employee share, not 15% increase in.
No, 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 15% employee share. So, you have, because with the fund balances, Dr. White has pointed out, the complete unpredictable, and frankly, makes us unstable predictions of our financial system right now, because we don't know what to count on, at any level of funding source. I don't, this is something we can control. So, I don't know that I, it's, I think the conversation for the board is the when, do we get to 15% of an employee share, not if?
But thank you for that recommendation, we can certainly look into the possibility of an emergency fund and what that would look like, we'll absolutely ask that.
Thank you, I would, I, I think that would be great. The other question, is there any way to move our annual renewal date to closer to our fiscal year? Because that is an early, because, I mean, at, at, you know, in the state system, we are, we, my open enrollment happens in June, because I nearly almost miss it, because I have vacation brain, or May. But, but can we, so that these predictions are tighter for us? I mean, this is, it is a long time to say, okay, you have to get your budget closed out back in March, but the real amount of insurance is going to happen January 1. And I can see the questioning from, and I defer to the insurance about the possibility of that, but I know that we do it, I don't know.
I would think that we would have to change carriers, and there, it would be their cycle.
Okay.
I would think.
We can certainly ask those questions, I don't, I don't recall being in conversations about what that would look like. I will tell you, just my, my, one thing that I appreciate out of this plan is that if we have an issue like we do right now, it's only going to hit half of this budget. And I, so I have a little bit of time to, to, to have these kinds of conversations about, you know, what it's, what does our budget need to be for the subsequent year? But, but your point is very well taken, that there's, there's a flip side to that, in that we're already into the budget year, and now we're, we're getting information that is different than what we had.
Yeah, and certainly, I take that point, you do a wonderful job of managing the flows as we have them, and I take that point seriously. I'm, as I think that we are likely entering a different funding stability flow in, to the future, it may be better to know right upfront.
About that, absolutely.
You know, and, and maybe it's for the next time, because I know we can't, we, we compete this periodically, and maybe it's not a now, maybe it's a later on. I swear, I'm almost done. I would just add on, oh, how long is our open enrollment? So.
Weeks.
So, it's tight. So, really, what we are talking about, you'd have six weeks from our, not quite, from our first meeting, five weeks, if you say right to the last day of open enrollment, to help people. Okay, so it's tight. And then, I, I think I was just going to add on to, again, Ms. Watkins' point about everybody's talking about this. In my other life, I get a lot of HR news, and people are talking about 9% and 11% increases this year. And just for us all to buckle down, they're predicting that for the next three to five years. This isn't changing anytime soon, depending on the predictions, I mean, they all change a bit.
Yes.
Have you looked at, what, the deductibles? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to throw you off.
I think it's incorporated into what we're talking about, when we are talking about medical, but I will, we'll confirm that.
Okay. It's just curious, because that's a big deal right now, also.
Does that go into their deductible? That included part of, it's a separate deductible, right?
The deductible is usually separate.
Madam Chair, I have one question, I'm sorry.
That's right, I, you're, you're fine, and I hadn't counted six yet either, so go ahead.
Okay, good, all right. Thank you, I tried to merge one, so I might be down to five. And this is, this is a clarification question, so when we walked through our examples, and one of them was, you know, if we increase deductibles, it's about a million, a million dollars in reduction. And if we increase our premiums, it's about a million dollars in savings. So, I'm assuming that means if we did both, it's about two millions in savings.
That's correct, over the plan year.
Over the plan, right, over the plan year.
So, we would, we would experience about a million of that in the current budget year.
Right, and I'm not suggesting doing all of that, and want to be clear, I would not support doing that. But as we think into the future of what the adjustments need to be, we're looking at a substantial amount of money that we're, looks like we're going to need. The question is how, and how do we do it fairly?
Right. I mean, if we're, if we're looking at a 10% increase in rates next year, for example, that would, that would be probably two-plus million dollars of additional cost. So, that's some of the thought process in considering some of these ways to offset that a little bit.
We may be able to eat some offsets, if we, the more we take, the more we may be able to offset the impact of future years.
Yes, ma'am.
That's helpful also, thank you. And I'm sorry for taking so much long, I appreciate it.
But it is appreciated, because if we have these questions, and undoubtedly, our staff, who's going to be directly impacted by these choices, or the choices that are presented to them, also have those questions, so, so, so thank you, Dr. Jamison. Mr. Cherry?
Yes, so, to that point, and that's what I was going to say, that transparency with this issue matters. And I think the most important thing that we keep transparency at the forefront, because we are in the people business, right? And given the tight deadline that we do have as far as our August, October meeting, we just want to make sure, I think this is the opportunity for us to come together and figure out what is the best option for our staff. And, you know, I know they have questions, I, I do have questions, I think I'll save for our workshop discussions. However, I just wanted to make sure we all were kind of in that same mindset, which I can hear that everybody's feeling it. So, at this point, as our CPS, as a division, we want to make sure we make the best possible decision for our staff, because costs goes up. And like you said as well, I mean, that was nail on the head, $3,000 and $6,000 is a lot of money. So, we just, I just want to make sure if we are, well, there is no if, the when, when we do, we need to just make sure we are upfront. So, all my questions initially have been answered as far as having people coming in and having the conversation with our staff, the one-on-ones, and then we'll go from there. But just wanted to make sure we keep transparency at the forefront.
Thank you.
So, I wanted to mention, you know, I did note, we have a little bit of information about how we compare to, say, other divisions, you know? Because one thing, if we have a high deductible, then a low percent meeting the max deductible might just indicate, we just have a really high deductible, so nobody meets it, you know? And so, if our deductible goes up to 6,800 for some plan next year, we may have only 2% meet their deductible, because it's so darn high, you know? So, I'd be interested in rather, you know, maybe like, what did our, how does our deductible amount look? If our deductible is much higher than neighboring divisions, maybe that's why we're not really meeting our deductibles as much for the maximums. Or maybe looking at what the overall dollar amount was represented, as opposed to the percent of employees who reached their deductible, maybe what was the dollar amount? Or some, some sort of characterization in that regard instead. So, that'd be something I'd be kind of interested in knowing about. And I also appreciated what Ms. Trigg had brought up, and Ms. Watkins, about how we can help our staff to be informed. And when, you know, I think kind of some of the hallmarks of our division is transparency and communication, so we really work on those things all the time. And so, I appreciate, like Ms. Quintana said, that this, we have, we have the information to try to make the best decision possible. We are well-informed to make decisions because of the information and the legwork you all do. But I appreciate any ability we can give our staff, the agency, to be able to help make this decision for themselves, because they're, you know, so whether that's a survey, whether that's the one-on-one consultation, some like, what, you know, like, would they, would you switch plans? Because that would impact, you know, our CPS expenditures if we change things. Would you rather see an increase in deductible, or, you know, an increase in your premium? Or would you like a little bit of each, or, you know, so just kind of those global views of our staff? But I also appreciate that the board, you know, we really try to approach this also with empathy, understanding that, like you say, we're in the people business, so we want to try to buffer the impact of things that are happening out of our control for our staff, so. And, and yes, I think we have a lot still to talk about at the workshop, to try to hash out what maybe some other creative solutions are, to try to help, you know, buffer this impact for our staff.
Can I respond to that? I want us to be thoughtful about what a survey can cause a panic in our associates. What I understand from what I heard is that most of our associates are not going to be impacted substantially. And when you send out a survey and you ask, would you rather have a higher deductible, or a lower, you know, or a higher premium? Then you are making everyone feel panicked. So, I would just, and, and this timeline is very, I can appreciate that timeline, because we have it, we have it, I have it. So, that timeline is so tight, and I realize how I understand that you guys are focusing on trying to get this right for folks, and giving them the avenues for individual attention and assessment of their own personal needs. But my opinion is that the focus, the time would be well-spent on those things versus a global survey, asking the same question of people with different circumstances. That's just my opinion.
Clarify, you're saying the survey would.
Oh, it's a panic.
It would cause a panic with the, more so of that 90%, when it's that traditional, that is seeing that major difference, right?
The 91% of folks who are not going to be as heavily impacted, the five to, I can't remember what you said, five to $26 a month. Still money, don't get me wrong, right?
So, so are you, were you saying that sort of the education, the meet, the one-on-one meetings might be more effective?
And that's just my, yeah, that's my experience, and my opinion is that y'all don't have time for this survey. My opinion is spend that time getting those folks to understand their own, how this is going to impact them individually.
Madam Chair, if I could add, I would, I would second Ms. Watkins on this. I, I feel like this is, this is the business of the board and the leadership. I've never worked anywhere where I was given a choice on my healthcare options. And I get smacked around by the increases every year myself. I, I think people would rather, I, I know I would, as an employee elsewhere, like to see, what are my choices? How do I make an informed decision? Know that they did the best they could, I, you know, we'll, we'll try to get there. And I would, I think that's, yeah, I think that's an important.
Another thing that you might consider, I know I suggested the, the video and stuff, but I was thinking also too, you might ask our carrier if they have a simulator tool. That's something that we have, is a simulator tool, where they, they know your claims experience, and they can push it through, and simulate it for you, where that could save you on the number of one-on-one meetings that you have. Us open people's eyes as to, oh, I really should be on this plan, it's not as scary as I thought it would be, based on my claims experience and my family's claims experience. So, an electronic simulator would help.
And also too, just like Ms. Watkins stated, a wellness program that they could, if they go to their regular meetings, their hour appointments yearly and so forth, they get so much dollars that could go and help towards the premium as well, as something else that's possible.
We do have that in place, and, and we have not discussed making changes to that. And I believe the, the basic annual checkup is no cost to the employee for all of our plans. But yes, that, we, we do have a slight reduction to the premium, right, for if, if folks do that, get that, get that checkup every year. So, we certainly would intend to keep that in place.
And like, we also have like, it also has like, certain ones that they're going, and I, and it's to gear to make sure you got a healthy staff too. So, if they're going to get their regulars checked, like what, I. All the preventative care, pretty much. And they, we get so many dollars back, even if they walk daily and it tracks it, it'll give like $10 or something like it. I mean, it's just little things that could add up, and it also is the benefit to keep your staff healthy.
Sorry about that.
Yeah. Now, so we wanted to thank you all for this, a lot of this information. And we knew this was going to be a substantive conversation. And we do have, we do plan, I, I think the current plan is for us to discuss this, you know, more with some of this feedback at our next meeting, which is not just a workshop, but it's a special, it will be a special meeting. So there is the potential for votes at that time. And just on a final note too, I did also appreciate the idea that instead of passive enrollment this time, that, you know, something that was considered was active enrollment. So, you know, in lieu of something like a survey, that's helping to ensure that our employees are having that agency with those decisions. So, and, and yes, I know there will probably be a lot of further conversations, information gathering and sharing ahead of our next one, which is September 23rd. So.
That's a point of clarification.
Yes.
Your question was brought up about the prescription drugs, and that's on slide three. So if, if there's something else you need in addition, so we can make sure we have the information for you at the board workshop, please let us know.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Jackson, Mr. McKee, and to your teams as well for, for gathering all of that information and bringing it forward. And thank you to the school board for engaging in the thoughtful discussion. At last, I would also like to ask Mrs. Jackson to come on back. She's going to come.
She's got to switch.
Switching those books. Coming back for the annual report on procurement transactions with locally owned businesses and businesses owned by women and minorities. So, Mrs. Jackson, back to you.
Thank you very much. Good evening again. So we do have school board policy encouraging us to make every effort we can to work with locally owned, women-owned and minority-owned businesses. And as a part of that effort, twice a year, we bring you an update on kind of where we are. And this is our year-end report of how we did over the last fiscal year. So we typically look at this information in kind of three buckets. So the first section is, is what did we spend? And we break that down between capital and operational. And what you have here compares the, the most recently ended year with the prior year. So you do see a little bit of a year-over-year decrease in our spending with locally owned businesses and capital. The vast majority of our, our work for capital tends to be with locally owned businesses just because of the nature of that work. We do have a sizable year-over-year increase that you can see there with women-owned businesses because one of our major vendors, our transportation vendor is a women-owned business. So that impacted that number quite a bit in a, in a favorable way. Overall, our purchasing dollars were 2% higher than the prior year, but we saw a considerably larger increase than that in our work with locally owned, women-owned and minority-owned businesses. So that certainly is favorable. And so moving forward, as I mentioned, sort of looking percentage-wise at, at how we spent our money last year. As I said, the majority of our capital spending tends to be with locally owned businesses. So not surprising to see 72% of our spending there was with, for capital projects was with locally owned. We did have a, a little bit of a year-over-year decrease. We've completed some projects, as you know, of day tech and some of the work here and that sort of thing. So that's just what reflected the, a slight decrease there. But overall spending with locally owned, women-owned and minority-owned businesses represent 36.6% of all spending on goods and services in this most recently ended year. And that's a 45% increase over the, the portion of spending with locally owned, women-owned and minority-owned businesses in the prior year. So certainly moving in a good direction in terms of kind of, of all of our spending, how much of that was with a locally owned, women-owned or minority-owned business. And lastly, we like to look at just the number of vendors we work with. And, and that can fluctuate from year to year depending on, on what we're doing, the type of work that we need. That, that certainly can impact those numbers. But I, I was happy to see that we sort of continued to move in a positive direction. We worked with 28 more businesses that identify as women-owned, minority-owned or locally owned in 2025 than we did in 2024. And that caused me to kind of wonder, you know, I, I feel like I say this to you a lot, that, oh, we're kind of steadily going up. But so, so I went back and looked the last handful of years just to see. So that's that little chart in the corner of, of what these numbers have done, have been over the last few years. So, you know, not surprising that we had some decreases in pretty much everything in 2020 and 2021 with the pandemic. But, but we have had a pretty steady increase or at least holding steady, as we saw in '23 and '24, in the number of businesses that we work with that are women-owned, minority-owned and, and locally-owned. So, so certainly we feel good about that. And some of our efforts to maintain and increase those numbers are certainly, we participate in efforts that our, our chamber does, and we do our own outreach efforts to try and connect and network with businesses and also provide a little education. You know, working with government entities is, is a little bit complicated. And there are, the, the Virginia Public Procurement Act has pretty specific rules about how we can make purchasing decisions in a lot of cases. And, and some of these vendors are likely smaller vendors that might not be familiar with that. So we always make a point of, of trying to just outreach and connect with those businesses. And our, our hosted, we go, we participate in things that other entities do, but we always host an event ourselves. And that event will, is, for this year is scheduled to be October 14th from 10:00 a.m. to noon. And we're going to have it at the Community Empowerment Center this year. So we're excited about showcasing that site and inviting vendors to come and meet with us and meet with representatives of our different departments to learn about our needs, to tell us about what their services and, and make that connection. So, so all pretty good things there. So that's what we have for you. But I'm happy to take questions or comments.
Does the board have any questions or comments from Ms. Jackson at this time?
Oh, ma'am.
All right. None. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Jackson and Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Dr. White. Ms. Jackson? It's time for the financial forecast. And Ms. Jackson, when she's ready, will come on back.
All right. We're good to go. Thank you.
And some of you may notice also a different title this evening on the agenda, and I'm sure Ms. Jackson will get to that.
Yes. So this is the first report of the new fiscal year. So we just have one month reporting. So this is our report of our revenue and expenditures through the month of July. And as, as you'll notice, we go through, it's, it'll look a little bit different than what you're used to because of course, we're, we have some changing processes that we're still working through with the city and, you know, what fund balance will be, if any, available to us. And, and so, so for, for a lot of years, this report is kind of focused on that. What did we budget to use out of fund balance? What's left? That kind of thing. But because of those changes, at, at the recommendation of our chair, we've, we've added a focus on our appropriated amount. What was appropriated for us to spend? Where are we with that? Because that's certainly an important focus to make sure we're staying within that appropriated amount. So, so you'll see some things that are familiar and some things that are changed. And I, I will say, I, I certainly, because we don't change how we report things like this very often, you know, as you receive this information and as you think through it, if you have recommendations for ways we should tweak this to make it more useful to you, I'm certainly open to that. So at any time, please don't hesitate to share. So with that, we'll, we'll move into looking at where we are on the revenue side for our general fund. This is reported as you're used to seeing it. We compare against a three-year average of actual experience and, and see how, how did our experience in the current year compare to that and use that as our projection method. So very close to budget based on our experience through July would forecast to be just about $80,000 below budget when we compare against that three-year average. So certainly very close. On the expenditure side, we are below that forecasted amount when we compare against that three-year average by about 3.2 million. So not uncommon to have lower expenses in the first month of the year. So that's where we are. On the expenditure side, our general fund appropriation for the current budget year was $275 million. So based on our experience thus far, when we use that three-year average, we would project if our experience in the next 11 months mirrored the experience we had in that first, that first month, that we would only use about $269 million of that appropriated amount. So, so that is just an estimate. Obviously, a lot more, a lot more experience to, to, to go, but just based on that first month's experience, that's what that forecast would look like. I'm going to jump into food service now. Based on our experience through July, revenues are forecasted basically equal budget, very close to budget. On the food services side, on the expenditure side, pretty much close to budget, about, about $20,000 below budget based on our experience through, through July. And of course, that's a, July is a very low experience month with just, just summer programs ending and that sort of thing. So our appropriated amount in our food services fund was $13.5 million. So based on our experience in July, if all of our remaining 11 months tracked exactly in that manner, we would only use about $13.1 million of that appropriated amount based on experience thus far. I did also leave the information about fund balance for our food services fund in here because that is a separate enterprise fund that's federal dollars. So we are actually required to have some portion of fund balance in that fund. So I did leave that. We had budgeted to use about $730,000 out of fund balance for our food service programs. And so were we to end the year based on the same, tracking the same experience as we had in our first month, we would only use about $710,000 of that. So still pretty close to what we budgeted on that side. And lastly, want to include our capital fund. So we were appropriated $17.87 million in that fund for specified projects. Our experience, of course, '24, '25 is not completely closed yet. We're in our audit process now. But as of September 2nd, we had spent $9.79 million of that in the '24, '25 year. We don't have expenses thus far in the current year that, they'll, they'll be coming soon because of course, we have ongoing projects, chiefly Preston Park, that are underway. And, and, you know, pretty much all capital projects often tend to be multi-year because of the, the size and nature. So at this moment, just over 8 million of that is, is currently, it's designated for projects, but not yet spent. So that is what I have for you as of July. But I'm happy to take questions or comments or recommendations for how we are presenting this a little differently.
Sure. And before we get to comments for the board, I just want to be cognizant of time for our student reps for their very first meeting because we're getting real close to nine o'clock pumpkin time. So, so if they need to feel, you know, if, go ahead and get up and leave your guys, you're welcome to do that anytime. So, but, because I'm not sure how long our discussion here will continue. So, and, and Mr., sorry, Mr. Wade or, or Mr. Lopez Ortiz, do either of you have any questions for Ms. Jackson about the, the fund, the financial forecast or fund balance before, you know, before you pack stuff up? Just want to give you the chance.
So I have no questions, but it was a great presentation, very informative, and it was easy to tag along. So thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you.
Yes. Mr. Wade, any, any questions or comments for you?
No, I don't have no comments, but I did enjoy the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So since benefits, we started that, and we'll start down here. Ms. Cantona, any questions or comments for Ms. Jackson?
No, just like always, thank you because we, you hit it back to back to back today.
Yes.
And you did it, girl. So good job. Thank you.
Yes. Mr. Link?
Oh, ma'am. Thank you so much.
Dr. Jameson, six or less?
I, I have only one quick clarification. Just reminding, yes, I will. Six or less? I like that.
Maybe you'll get 10, 10 a meeting. You just got to use them sparingly.
They're going to be very detailed questions. The $8.8 million, did we reappropriate that for this year? I know we, I had to get the bulk appropriated in last year. Did, I'm just trying to remember.
We have not yet done that. We will do that. Just want to make sure that we're reappropriating the right amount to make sure we've paid all the bills related to last year. And then the, the unspent portion, we will, we will certainly do that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Ask your question. So the 8.8, that's
I was very succinct.
Yes. So that's for, we don't, we already were appropriated the 17.
But that was in last fiscal year.
It was in last fiscal year. So just
But we have to reappropriate whatever's left.
Yeah. Based on the recommendations that we've gotten, we feel like we probably do need to do that every year to just request a formal reappropriation of the portion that was not spent in that particular fiscal year.
Okay. And we had discussed that a little bit on the side, that annually, we're going to request the reappropriation for what didn't end up getting spent, which is very typical for capital projects, especially because they can, they can have delays.
For our students, and this is probably weird language, all of our money is, comes from other sources because schools don't have taxation. We don't create revenue. So when we ask, we're, we get a certain budget from all our funds, but then we have to ask council to appropriate that money before we spend it. So we know we have it, but council basically has to say, okay, we know you have it. We know how you're going to use it. And we, and we hear it from them. So when we say appropriated, it just means it goes back through council. And they say, yes, okay, spend that money.
Yeah. A money permission slip, pretty much. Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Jameson. Ms. Trigg?
I don't have any comments, but thanks.
Thank you.
Ms. Watkins? Mr. Cherry?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you answered one of my questions, which was about food services that we get to keep, we, you know, the, a fund balance for that particular pot of, of monies there. I did appreciate that we get to see how much our, how much of our appropriation for the year we have spent down. But I know I was the one who asked if maybe we could incorporate that since we're moving away from the fund balance each year. I did note, so we're 3.2 below expenditures so far. So on the slide with like projected expenses, wasn't it about 272? And that's why it's reflected only 269 of where we are?
Right. Yes.
Like a couple of slides back.
And I mean, I will caution that that's, that's projecting an entire year based on one month of experience. So we'll, we'll take that with a grain of salt. But yes, that, that is where we would be if the remainder of our year tracked according to what we experienced in the first month. So, yes.
But, but I do appreciate that because that will also be important as we get to the tail end of our fiscal year, when we're talking about what monies have been unspent but appropriated and making good, sound decisions on what to do at that time, knowing that, you know, as we talked about how we adjust with our rainy day fund and how that has changed from last, from previous fiscal years to now. That's it for me. So thank you very much, Ms. Jackson. Okay. And then we've got Ms. Jackson again, I think. Let's look at the financial statements. Ms. Jackson, is there anything unusual to report this month?
No, ma'am. So the financial statements, of course, are just a little bit more detailed and summarized in what we just shared. But I, I certainly am happy to take any questions or comments, but I don't have anything to, additional to point out at this time.
Any questions or comments?
Oh, ma'am.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. The statements will be received and filed.
Thank you.
Okay. Onto committee reports and ongoing business. Are there, does anyone have reports to share on this side? Have anybody had any committee meetings set? And we've already been pretty well informed with PG and L. Yes.
The only thing I would share, our committee with the School Board City Council Task Force is that we do have a meeting set for September 29th at 2:00 p.m. in Zoom.
Thank you, Dr. Jameson. Mr. Cherry?
Shameless plug, community engagement. Awesome ribbon cutting last Friday. So super proud of the work that we are doing, where we are shifting from it's happening to it's happened. So excited, very excited.
Wonderful. All right. Moving on to the Virginia School Boards Association Code of Conduct. On December 1st, 2000, the Virginia School Board Association, or VSBA, Board of Directors voted unanimously to adopt a model code of ethics for school board members. Annually, the VSBA Board of Directors requests that school boards across Virginia adopt the model code at a public meeting of the school board. So the Roanoke City School Board will read and adopt those, those code of ethics at this time. So we will start. VSBA Code of Conduct for school board members. As a member of my local school board, I will strive to be an advocate for students and to to improve public education. And to that end.
I will have integrity in all matters and support the full development of all children and the welfare of the community, Commonwealth and nation. I will attend scheduled board meetings.
For my local school board, I will strive to be an advocate for students and to improve public education. And to that end, I will come to board meetings informed concerning the issues under consideration. I will make policy decisions based on the available facts and appropriate public input.
I will delegate authority for the administration of the schools to the superintendent and establish a process for accountability of administrators. I will encourage individual board member expression of opinion and establish an open two-way communication process with all segments of the community.
I will communicate in accordance with board policies, public reaction and opinion regarding board policies and school programs to the full board and superintendent. And I will bring about desired change through legal and ethical procedures, upholding and enforcing all laws, state regulations and court orders pertaining to schools.
As a member of my local school board, I will strive to be an advocate for students and to improve public education. And to that end, I will refrain from using the board position for personal or partisan gain and avoid any conflict of interest or the appearance of impropriety. I will respect the confidentiality of privileged information and make no individual decisions or commitments that might compromise the board or administration.
I will be informed about current educational issues through individual study and participation in appropriate programs, such as those sponsored by my state and national school boards associations. I will always remember that the foremost concern of the board is to improve and enhance the teaching and learning experience for all students in the public schools of Virginia.
Therefore, we will all, we all will always strive to demonstrate appropriate behavior and conduct as public school board members. So is there a motion and a second to approve the V S B A Code of Ethics for School Board Members as presented?
So move.
Moved by Ms. Quintana, seconded by Ms. Watkins. Oh, was that Ms. Trigg? Um, seconded by Ms. Trigg. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say no. And the motion carries and we have adopted the Code of Ethics from V S B A. Um, moving on to ongoing business, is there any ongoing business or reports to share at this time?
I would share one quick thing, and that is simply, uh, and, uh, thanks to Claire. Um, we have once again been approved, selected to present at V S B A this year. And so thank you for Claire for helping us with that submission. Um, uh, I don't know exactly how many of us are presenting, but we have been accepted and thank you for all your hard work and it'll be fantastic. Yeah.
Thank you for sharing that, Dr. Jamison. Um, moving on to future business and reminders. Um, as you can see, there's several reminders for upcoming events and we did discuss this at the workshop. And, um, that also reminds me, board members, you have, um, in your blue folders, the updated handbook and some other information that goes with work of the board to try to keep us on the same page, especially, you know, maybe if you, um, weren't particularly at the meeting, our workshops when we're doing work of the board and weren't here for the discussions or things like that, we'll kind of, um, there's some information in there for all of us as we go through the year. Um, so one of the things we had discussed was about board participation and visibility and community and other events and expectations for, um, attendance. So the mayor's cup is coming up September 19th. Um, I know that is a, I love going to that and taking especially my son, but I am going to be out of town this year. So I did, I was curious, are there any board members who are going to be in attendance this year to the mayor's cup? I hate missing it. Wonderful. Nice. And then we have a school board.
I will be out of town.
Uh, we have a school board workshop, um, that is actually a special meeting and workshop. Um, so that'd be a voting meeting and, um, and live streamed. So on the 23rd, are there any board members who are aware that they may not be there on the 23rd? Okay, we've got one. We'll keep that in mind, Ms. Truski. Um, we have our fall joint city council and, um, and school board meeting on October 6th at the Community Empowerment Center. Do we have, um, any board members who are anticipating not being in attendance? Okay. Um, great. But otherwise, it looks like we're good on quorum. And then our fall retreat is October 7th in the evening and October 8th during the day. Again, we really encourage all of our board members to be in person for those, those times. That's really a good, um, time for us to get work done as a board. How are we doing on attendance for those, um, as, um, everyone going to be able to be in attendance? And we're looking at, um, how we can do some virtual options potentially, especially for the long day. Got it. Okay. So we're working on the logistics of all of that, so we'll make sure to communicate with Ms. Truski. Great. And then we have other board meetings there. You see our teacher of the year coming up in November. This goes, the dates all the way up to winter break. So we'll go through, um, so those are, are public there for future events. Okay. And moving on, we do have a closed meeting tonight. Um, before we get to the motion for the closed meeting, there will not be any further business taking place after the closed meeting. Yes.
Real quick for the student representatives, because it's time for them to go ahead and exit.
Yes.
For the mayor's cup game, that'll be a Patrick Henry versus William Fleming. We usually have a tent, so make sure you all find us if you want to come down with us.
Do, do student representatives get a V S B A, like, board card to get into stuff?
They haven't. I don't know if they should. They, they, no.
You know? Okay.
No? Okay.
Got it. Um, all right, thank you. So student representatives, thank you for your very first meeting of the year. Nice having you. All right. So for our closed meeting, do, oh, yes.
And before, um, they leave, they can go upstairs and get their bags. Don't leave without going up and getting your bags.
And, Tia, Ms. you?
And our student representatives will be on the list.
Kim will love you for it.
Yeah. Our student representatives will be on the list, uh, for the game.
Wonderful. So do we have a motion for the closed meeting?
Ta-da. I move that the board convene in a closed meeting pursuant to section 2.2-3711A8 of the Code of Virginia for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel.
Second.
So is there a second for the closed meeting?
Yeah, I guess I have to do a roll call. Oh, it's a roll call? Yeah, it's a roll call.